All favor?
Yes.
That was a flub up on my part on the copier. Instead of throwing away, I'm like, just go with it.
We'll just do it on the other side.
Right.
That's saving paper.
Saving paper.
Can we approve the minutes from October 30th?
It would be nice if we had some minutes, but I don't have them. I don't have any.
Make that motion.
You're here. Have a second?
Yeah. We can't approve the minutes without a copy. Hold those in the next, on the next.
Oh, all right. The next one will prove to you Tuesday.
Yes.
I'll bring him anyway, so we can sugar it up.
Save it to 30.
Oh.
All right. Move on to old business, Lubec Ambulance, Renee.
Stephanie.
We'll just do old business.
Okay, okay.
So at the last slide board meeting, the board asked to pay it forward, the fifty, the green and white ambulance. Bobby contacted Eddie Moore, signed the director of Down East DMF, and to see if they wanted it and to see if anybody else would want it. Eddie checked with Charlotte, Eddie checked with Alexander. Both said that they didn't need it at this time. So I'm bringing it back to the board to find out if you want to put it up for auction. Unless you know of any other town that wants it.
No.
Put it up for auction.
Yeah, I, yeah, we've exhausted the, we have the other options.
We were most likely to put it in the auction.
I move that we put it up for auction, the ambulance.
All favor? Coming to new business, we have the pleasure of having the Washington County Sheriff's Department here to discuss their budget. Barry?
I'll get my chief with me too, so.
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Where you want me?
Wherever.
I just came to take a look. Yeah, he's going to take a look at me. Do you, you just want to be, find some questions at us?
Yeah, you can, you want Dare to set up then, so people can see us.
I could help introduce a little bit of this.
Oh, go ahead.
They're kind of here. As you all pointed me, I'm on the Washington County Budget Committee. There's nine of us. I represent District Two, and there are four other, three other people on that, in that district. The sheriff's budget by far is the one that gets the most discussion in these meetings. And rather than having you all tell me how to vote, I'd like for you to listen to the reasons why the sheriff and Chief Deputy Crabtree is asking for three additional deputies to be added to the fourth. And that's kind of where we are.
Before you go on and further, can you tell us the other seven, no, the four from District Two?
Yeah.
Where are the other six or five from?
There's Baileyville, Callis, Robinson, Jonesboro, Jonesport, East Machias, Machias, Eastport.
Okay, out of those, how many of those areas have their own police department?
All but Jonesport, Lubec and Jonesboro. East Machias doesn't either.
All right, so that's the statue of gentlemen off on that.
Yeah, maybe clarify that a little bit. All five organized police departments excluding the two reservations, Pleasant Point and Township, are all represented on that board. We only have seven police departments in Washington County.
So all seven.
Five.
Five out of the seven are on this board.
Right, because the other two are Township and Pleasant Point, which are the past two quality reservations. They, they each have a full time, you know, PD.
So on this budget committee, there's five that do not have their own police department and five that do.
Sort of kind of. There, there are five that do, four that don't, and you have a little tool this year, who is the, the state representative?
Lay down for whatever.
Right, I think last year it was Senator Burns, and Senator Maker has been on there.
Yeah.
So I, I think they take turns that way. That makes up the 10th person. But there's nine people on the budget committee, there's three from each district. Commissioner Cassidy's district, Commissioner Gardner's district, and Commissioner Crowell's district.
Commissioner Gardner is strongly for this increase. And he has, they have set up a public meeting October 30th at 6:30 at the Superior Courtroom for the budget committee to listen to the people that this affects, not just the heads of the committee making a decision. They want the people to tell the committee how they feel. Are you getting enough coverage? What are the needs? We need, we see a need in the county for something to happen. We know there's a problem. How can we fix it in the now? And I've got to be honest, most of the people in that room are not for it. So that's my take on it.
Because those are the people that have their own police department.
Correct.
Mike, what would the cost be spread out, you know, per, say, town?
The, the, the best way to figure this, and I'm going to say that Renee can probably answer the finer parts of this, but basically, what it, what it turns out to be for an additional three deputies, the total bill on that is going to be $431,330.
That's that.
Forty-three.
That sheet that the county treasurer provided.
Right, so what, what that would do is that spreads out that cost among everybody in the county. I think we have 46 towns and 33 townships, something like that in Washington County. So.
If you look at the other sheet that I provided with the highlight of Lubec, it would increase Lubec's portion from last year, $22,729.90. That would be Lubec's portion for the entire budget, not just the sheriff. This is the entire county budget.
Including the sheriff.
Including the sheriff.
And, and what we've kind of asked to do, and this is what I was talking about, where Renee maybe was going to speak a little more clearly about this. But we're trying to get out the number so that each town can figure out what that means to them. So that then the town can figure out, this is what it means to the individual taxpayer. This is how much your bill would increase if we were to say yes to this.
And I sat down with our assessor today, and he, it's right around the $15 mark. I mean, plus or minus, depend on, I mean, if you've got a $200,000 property, obviously it's going to be more than $15. But that's about the guideline, is the regular, yeah. It's about $15.
And, oh, sorry. That's all right. You know, the, the, we, we see a big need for, we'll pick three. If we can get three, we'll be happy, or we'll be somewhat happy. But, you know, we know what's going on crime-wise here in this county, and three is going to help us a lot. We're, we're still trying to work as hard as we can with the main state police. Their numbers are dwindling, and they, we, we're having a little bit of a problem working together right now just because they won't, they won't come right out and say how many people they're going to keep in Washington County, and whether we keep this call sharing thing going. And so we're, we're trying to look towards the future that, you know, that we're going to be prepared for this because we're not so sure how long some of these PDs are going to stay together. And if one of them collapses, it's going to be a disaster for us because all the pressure will be put back onto us. I mean, as it is now, when Machias doesn't have anybody on, guess who gets it? You know, we end up covering for them. Same thing with Milbridge. Milbridge is on, what did you say, third? We cover all of it. Well, I mean, they have one officer, they work eight hours a day. Twenty-four hours a day. So whereas that slot, which is usually us, we're covering Milbridge. You know, and Milbridge claims they have a PD, you know, and, and they do, but. And one thing I was going to say just before, just to give a little bit more background, this all came about through a series of meetings in the wintertime when they were discussing, the commissioners put something together because we, everybody started to notice quite an uptick in violent crime. And like we said, it's not that we've never had violent crime in Washington County. We've always had violent crime. But it's the frequency at which that has happened. We've, we had a couple of murders within seven months of each other. We had, I think, seven armed robberies last year to, to either residences or businesses. Just some things that we didn't, haven't typically seen frequently in the past. So that started to cause a discussion. We were asked to put some numbers together on what we think could, could help stem the problem. We came up with, if we could get three deputies all in one shot, that's going to allow us to immediately start to do some things. So we put together those numbers based on that conversation. Go get us the numbers, tell us whatever caused, and let's find out what people want to do with it. So that's how we came up with it.
And that drops down after the first year, from what I read.
Yes, it does. Yeah, because the, the first year, once we get into, you've got to buy, you've got to buy vehicles. You've got to buy weapons. You've got to buy uniforms. You know, you have to equip the vehicles. And so all of that is, the first part is, then when you commit to your next year, it's going to drop because we're going to be all equipped.
Yeah, and setup costs is all over.
Right. And I think just some quick math, working with the treasurer's office. I think roughly the next year, that would drop from $431.30 to $281.84. And there'll always be healthcare increases in the, in the line item and wage.
Yeah.
Whatever those wages turn out to be with unions and that type of stuff.
I, I think obvious for Lubec's standpoint, we have to weigh that against what would it cost us to hire our own. And I think you'd win in that score. The other thing, and this may not be the exact time to talk about it, but I want to talk about it.
Sure.
Is that the opioid crisis is something that we hear all the time. And of course, it's an issue, and I'm sure, I mean, I would like to say that much of the robberies that have existed and perhaps some of the other crimes are directly related to the opioid crisis. I, I think.
Oh, you're exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
They wrote on.
It's not rocket science, you know? But I also see that the police, I don't know how you feel about arresting and punitive measures on the opioid crisis or the preventative measures. And I tend to weigh in very heavily on preventative measures. So I don't know how you are going to address that.
I, I think, well, our attitude is, and I have, well, I'm getting older now, right? Almost half of my, almost half of my career has been in drug enforcement, whether with Main Drug or with the county. I was here in the inception of our crisis when it started. I think from our standpoint, we need to try to stop it. With that being said, we can always, once we catch people, now we can do an assessment. Is jail appropriate or is treatment appropriate? I, I think you have to make those decisions. I don't think we could say, well, everybody gets caught up, they go to jail. You know, for long terms or prison sentences. No, it's individual, let's see what's what. In my opinion, it's only my opinion, it's always cheaper to treat. It's expensive to keep people in jail, it really is. If we can, if we can get some people help, get them out of that cycle, I think as a community and as a county, we're better off. But we have to stop it.
Yeah, I think, I, I would probably go one step further and say, it's probably going to be cheaper to prevent. And I think one of the areas that the police or the sheriff or someone needs to pay attention to is getting into the schools and looking at some red flags that are happening. You know, as a former teacher, I, I could, I could look at a group of kids and I knew exactly who was going to end up being in the public. And if that were something you would do, working closely with the schools, I think it would be a very good thing.
Right, and that, and that's something we try to do.
Yeah.
And again, we're back to, in order to do something like that, you need more volume. The county, Washington County is split up into three sections.
Yeah.
We have Slot One, Slot Two, and Slot Three.
Yeah.
Slot One goes from Stuvent to Jonesboro, plus Route Nine. Slot Two goes from Jonesboro up to Robinson. Slot Three goes from Robinson to Arica County. So the deputies have somewhere between 800 and 1,000 square miles of patrol area. Now, not, you know, a lot of that is not heavily populated, but nonetheless, it's still part of our area. So we encourage that every, if you can, go to the school, stop in, try to visit, see what's going on, as much as we can.
Yeah, I, I was sort of thinking that, you know, if I were running the show, I would probably have one policeman who's, that's his, his job.
We had that many years ago.
Yeah, you had Dare, the Dare, yeah. And that's hugely successful. I don't care what it is, it was hugely successful.
It, it, in my, oh, go ahead, Jim, sorry. Well, probably the same thing. It broke. You're right, did work for a short time, and what it is, it's the only thing that they did was, they'd work with younger people.
Yeah.
They forget about the high school kids. As you get up there, there should have been another step.
Yeah.
And would have made that even more successful.
Then you should have continued.
Yeah. And that's the thing, and it, and it failed, once it left those kids there, because they, they were actually just left the drift.
Well, and it, it, somebody needs to take a long look at this and say, from the kids to the high school, maybe you need like a hook up with a big brother program at the high school, or that kind of, you, you need to kind of get a mentoring culture going on.
And I think a long, a long, if you think of it this way, maybe if we had, maybe if that could be broken up into three sections, kind of like these slots are. But think of it, if you had one music teacher for the whole of Washington County.
Yeah, well.
And, but, but I mean, they're spending a few minutes in this school.
Yeah.
Few minutes in this school, a few minutes.
Yeah, ten minutes, yes.
I mean, you're just trying to get this done.
Sure, sure.
I think one of the things that could be looked at and may be, may be useful and may, and may bear some proof, I don't think it necessarily has to be the police that go in to do this. I think there's a lot of qualified people that can do this, whether they're teachers, whether they're healthcare professionals, whether they're mental health professionals. We can all go to the school, but they can't do the burglaries and the thefts.
A partnership, a co-op, a collab.
Right, let's get somebody in there, let's start looking at this. Let's start talking about it. And I do agree that there has to be some preventive measures with this. That's all part of the equation.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm getting the eyeball.
Getting the eyeball.
Yeah, shut up, Rachel.
Does she get people with that thing, or? After surgery, she's a little, a little more difficult, so we try to get away with more.
But that is a conversation that needs to keep going, I think.
Sure.
Can we have one question? I didn't know if Dwayne said this, this is based on valuation of the town, Mike. That's what every town is based on, the evaluation. It's not just how much each town pays.
You're doing not too solid.
Yeah, I think it's.
State evaluation on that.
Right. So everybody's going to be a little bit different in every town.
Yeah.
And, and really, I think that's the only, each town has to look at their own situation and decide best they can, this is really what it means to the people of that town or, or, you know, township, for the county. Between, between the chief and I, we try to break it down to, to argue, what are you going to have to give up? Are you going to have to give up, you know, a loaf of bread and a gallon of milk? You know, and is it worth your, your doing that? We were corrected by Callis, didn't like us saying that because of the two-page, hey, you know, he did, the paper did Callis, which was nothing, faults everything in there. What he had to say was completely wrong. And he just poisoned, trying to poison what we're trying to do, and it's just ridiculous. You know, and for him to actually even put that in the paper. So, but, and he did, he corrected this again the other day, he did not like us saying that because why not simplify it so people can understand it? You, you can't just do like he does and tell everybody that they got a half a million dollars and the town of Callis has to take care of that. It's wrong.
Well, you could weigh it against the cost of what, what it costs you to keep crime at a bay, you know, in Callis.
Renee, I think if you maybe explain how it's going to help, the additional deputies, how will it change the schedule? How will, are you going to put two more on? And what, how will it increase the chance of your town having a patrol?
Right. Our vision is, and this is one of the reasons for the three people, the way this is set up, currently it's set up in three different slots. We have three deputies per shift. So you have to have day shift, night shift, and somebody's on day off. So by taking in an additional three, we even out, as opposed to one, where now you just, you're, you're putting it on one shift, but there's still two other shifts lacking. So with the current agreement that we have with the state police, theoretically throughout the month, we each have half of the county, half of the town. So, meaning if we have Slot One today, most likely tonight we'll have Slots Two and Three. Or we could have One and Two, or Two and One, I mean, Two and Three. So they try to even that out throughout the month. So in some cases, if we only have one slot, yes, we'd have four people over. So you'd have one person responsible for the radio. That would give us three additional people to go work on something, whether it's thefts, burglaries, drugs, warrants, whatever is going on. Now we have additional personnel that aren't necessarily responsible for answering those complaints. Because part of the issues are, we'll take Lubec for example. You either come to Lubec or you don't. You can't drive through it. You have to make a decision to come here. Same with Beale, same with Eastport. Jonesport's a little bit lucky because you can loop through and, and come back out through Mason's Bay and get, get back to Route One. So the person that's responsible for Slot Two, they have to make a decision to come into Lubec. If I'm all the way into Lubec and maybe I'm down Bailey's mistake or something, and now all of a sudden I have a crash in Western. I got to drive all the way up out of Lubec, get back on to Route One, to get down Route One, to get up 192, to get to Route Nine. So if we have more people in these areas, we have more of a chance to be in different places, working on different things. And sometimes we may have two slots. So you may have two deputies in two slots, we may have a deputy in the slot, and we may have the other two people out doing something, maybe in this side, that side, or maybe somewhere else. Yeah.
How many deputies do we have?
We have 12. We have 12 that, right now, 10 of which, I would call them patrol deputies, two with a drug unit, and then the sheriff and myself. Another thing is too, is that if we, we've been, we've been looking at these maps and stuff and, and trying to figure out a better way to do this, to try to step outside of the box and try to think of something different. I, I'd like to see us to go back to if, let's take, for instance, I lived in Cherry, and I still live in Cherry, in case I still do. If that's the area that I was going to be working in, then let me work that area. Don't have me go to into Machias and work that area, which is another slot. Work an area that you're familiar with, you know the people. We could solve a lot more crimes. It's where we, when I first started in the main state police, that's how we, how we started doing this. And then you, you were assigned like maybe 10 or 12 towns, and those were yours. And you got to know the people, people knew you, you were their police officer. You know, and, and they would always call you, or they'd land right at your house, which is the way they used to do it back. Just so that people would be familiar with it. When we switch people around, and main state police is doing the same thing, it's bouncing around, you don't have time to come back to do your, your investigation work. You don't get to know the people, you know, you're just kind of just bouncing. And then you go to another slot the next day, well now, okay, that's great, I get to be over here because I had a burglary, well now I have to get back. And that's what we're trying to stop. We're trying to get it so that people are familiar with the people, work in the areas that they live in, and we're trying to map it out.
Well, we always had Mike and Rodney here, years ago.
Oh, I remember.
Two of them, yeah.
Pretty much full time.
Crisp game later.
Yep. Interestingly enough, a survey that we put out two or three years ago now, we basically, after the sheriff got involved, we sat down and we thought we knew what the issue was. And then we got thinking, well, maybe we don't know what the issue is. Or maybe we think we know, but maybe we don't know. So we sent out a basic survey to all of the towns, just asking, you know, what would you like to see, what do you think the biggest problems are in your town? And what would you like to see done about? Turns out, we were pretty much right. But the interesting part was, all of the towns that had a trooper or a deputy that lived in those towns, they thought, you know, we like the amount of cops. We don't have any more cops, but they live in your town, so you're constantly seeing. Gives the illusion that this cops everywhere.
It makes a difference.
Where somebody else, where no, where, where a trooper or a deputy, or a marine patrol, somebody did this, they're like, I would like to see a few more.
Yeah.
So it is that, when you, when you live in those, you become that town or that area, you know, that's your call, that's who they call, that's who they look at.
I think we had six of you guys at one time.
Right. And years ago, we had a lot of part-time people with the sheriff's office. So even though the full-time deputies, at one time they may be four, five, six, something like that, but they would be able to do in their investigations, our call would demand, they would tend people, you could pick up the phone and call in any area, and they would go handle the complaint.
Yeah.
We don't have that today. We have a few part-time, we're supposed to do kind of special things, but they're not typically out handling those complaints. If they're working, they're in a cruiser, handling a shift in whatever slot it is on. So over the years, and we put this up on the board down there, we just, I think we picked 1996. And we took all the police officers that we could remember that worked in Washington County for deputies, PDs, troopers. And we came up with somewhere around 50. We didn't include the part-time people. And we did the same thing for today, we're at 38. So the numbers have actually gone down over the last, you know, 20 years.
All right, so add into that, if you were to get this passed, do you have the people to fill those slots?
I'm confident we can find people to fill those slots. You need to hire the three, some people, I'm confident with that.
Another thing, would you consider adding a slot to shorten up the mileage and the response time?
I wouldn't say we'd rule that out, but again, and, and we've got a big map in the office, a piece of plexiglass on it, and we're drawing lines and trying to figure out and running data to find out, you know, where all these complaints come in and if we move some of these towns, does it even the complaints up a little bit? So we're not opposed to that. I would say, you know, certainly it involves, at this point, under the current situation we're in, I mean, that's a conversation with the state police too, because if we're in this call sharing, we really can't just say, oh, by the way, we added new slots, so fill in when you can.
Yeah.
It, it's discussion.
Yeah.
And also, keep in mind that we're trying to get it so that some of our people can be freed up just a little bit and not be on that, sitting right in a vehicle, waiting for the radio to make a little squawk sound because they know they have to go somewhere. If we can free it up a little bit, we can maybe, you know, get them to help with somebody's investigation. Do some of the work with the drug units as far as, you know, stopping cars for them. And there's, there's all kinds of different things that we can do. It's just, if we do go to the fourth slot, the first thing we'd ask for is we, probably we need an extra three more because of the fact that we, we try to, because we're, we'd have four people, all stuck in a slot and working nothing but the radio. Yeah, and, and part of this, and what it brought this about, is just the type of calls we get today, they're no longer one-person calls. I mean, and, you know, once you get old like I am, we all did stuff back in the day that we probably shouldn't have done by ourselves. But you did because that's what we did. Backup, yeah, they're an hour away, but they'll be here. A lot of the calls we go through today are two people called. And, and we said this at one of the meetings, and it is true, we, we have enough cops right now to keep us safe, we think, let alone somebody else with the type of things that are going on. Um, let alone somebody else, um, with the type of things that are going on. So part of that is, you know, having those extra bodies, because this person may have to go assist, or we're constantly calling somebody out, um, to go on these, these calls. We always check to see who's in the area, um, you know, obviously. And if somebody's out working, whether it's game warden, patrol, anybody with a badge. Um, and, and we all help each other out that way. But we're trying, at this point, we're trying to get it, or see if we can't get ahead of them, instead of constantly playing catch-up.
And some of those things that's been happening to us too, is that, uh, I hate to beat up on the main state police, because I did twenty-five years there, very proud of doing it and everything, but they've changed their game plan. Uh, some of the things that, uh, that they used to cover, uh, like with detectives and things, they're not covering them now. And so that could spin back to us. Now, we have to do it, we, like the, and we use it for an example the other day, sexual assaults on, you know, with, with, you know, children and stuff. We may have to send our officer during this investigation to Portland or Bangor for this,
forensic?
Forensic interviews.
Interviews. And, and, and so now, okay, we take the guy right off a ship, because he's doing an investigation that the state police used to do, and we ship him off, and then they're gone all day, we may have to leave him down there for the night. So that means travel time down, staying overnight, uh, and then we've got to now replace that person that's now missing out of the ship. So we pay overtime for that.
Well, that would be my one question that I had, and it's pessimistic, or it's a spin you can do in, in selling this to the towns, but what is your confidence from the state police department, that we're not catching the rabbit? You're adding three, so they take a percentage of responsibility that they currently have in Washington County. Well, now they got three more, so let's, and then, and then you're, you're always playing catch-up, the spin being, well, if you don't, next time you come to us, you're gonna ask for six, not three. I, I mean, I'll,
But you can't, you can't blame the sheriff on this one, because, because, uh, the main state police have been reducing their numbers down like you would not believe, and people aren't paying attention to it. And, uh, when, when I was here on the road, we asked, every time we had an inspection, every year, we would ask the colonel, we want more manpower, we need more manpower in this area. Denied, 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 and, and they still won't do it. They, you know, I drew up a plan for them, and presented to them for twenty-one guys on the road, uh, for the main state police, not counting the three sergeants and the lieutenant, and, uh, it was, it was, it was beautiful. Of course, I did it, so it may look great, but, uh, they, nope. And they weren't entertaining at all, and so they, they keep these guys really down. The only thing is, that, I don't, and I haven't figured this out yet, people that have been living in this area, they're transferring out, transferring out, I'd call them a suitcase trooper. Because they don't stay here for any length of time, they may not even be a year, and they'll transfer up to Hancock. Well, why are you letting them go up there? You own them, you leave them down where you're supposed to, here in Washington County. We've got troopers that are coming from Dedham, uh, God knows where, but, you know, and coming down here to cover a slot. What's the first thing they do? Wow, ten, eight, uh, you have an accident, it's in Machias, where you're supposed to be. Well, they're coming from Dedham. Call and see if the, uh, someone from the sheriff's office can, uh, stand by for them. So here we go, we're covering something that they should have been down here in the first place. If that's our patrol area, why aren't they in their patrol area? And nobody, but nobody complains about the main state police.
Right.
It can cause Augusta, because I've already checked. And, and, and so we kinda get it. You know, we end up with doing the complaints, or, or people complain to me about it, and I'm like, wow.
Is it, is it thinking out of the box, and it's something Joanne said about, and you were saying how when people used to live
Yep.
in the area. Towns give tax breaks for businesses to come in. And whether it be a ten-year plan, you know, we'll give you a reduced rate on your taxes to encourage you coming in. Has there ever been such a thing of offering that to police officers?
Well, if that works, I have, I have three properties now, a church and myself, so I will take that, that.
Well, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is, is it, is it worth, for instance, for the town of Lubeck to have a deputy?
Like an incentive to come down here?
I'm just saying, encourage him to buy a house where he lives here, and he has to, so he lives here and he has to leave here every day and go back and forth. And if his taxes were, you know, seventeen hundred dollars, is it worth the town seventeen hundred dollars?
They can do it voluntarily, but again, it's against the union.
Yeah.
We need a donut shop.
Well, what we do is, we've been telling people, if you,
Police power pellets.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been telling people, if you would move to Washington County, we will go and, and give you an abandoned house to live in. We're trying everything.
Yeah, we got a few extra.
Yeah, well.
We got all kinds of money.
But you're right, it's, and, and, and let's take police aside, but we need people to come here. Right? We need people with families to come here. And, and I don't know how we entice them to do that, maybe that's somehow how you do that, and I know this sounds crazy, we've hashed it over before, but, you know, maybe you take some of these houses, the, the town's gonna take for taxes anyway. Hey, if you and your family come here, uh, we'll give you this house. Now, if you don't, we need you to stay for five years. Um, you have to pay the taxes on it, you have to do this. If you leave before your five years, it reverts back to the town. If you stay, it's yours. Um, what a big start for a young family, um, to have a house. It may not be the Taj Mahal, but it's probably gonna be, you know, be a little bit.
Well, it, it's something, it, we, we've gotta get outside of the box. And that's one of the things that when I, when I first came on and asked Kravvy to come work for me, I, and I told him, I said, we need to get outside of this box, because someone's got the flats turned down on them, you know, and we've gotta get on the outside to see what we can do different. And you say that some of these police officers around here, and they're like, they give you the hairy eyeball, and we're, but we're still always trying to think of something that's gonna be different, that hasn't been done or tried, because we've got to get people, you know, their attention as far as coming down here to stay.
So, so that's part of the vision, is it going or not?
There it is.
Resolved.
Yeah.
Right. And, and that's part of the vision, is to try to look as far up the road as we think we can see, and try to anticipate issues, problems. And can we start to get ahead of this, should we be thinking a little bit about the future? And what if? How are we gonna do this if this happens? So, so that's kinda where we're at, trying to figure out.
Because one of, one of the things that, uh, when I decided to run for this position, I, I knew about the drug problem here, but there was such a big change from when I retired in two thousand and ten, and when I decided to run. I'd never seen such a change in accounting. And it just, like I was saying, it was almost overnight, it was just a big switch around. And so, I mean, we've, we've, I brought Kravvy on board because of the fact that, uh, his experience in the drug world is what I wanted, you know, to, 'cause I was on the road, uh, dealt with it, but not like he had, so I knew he'd be my experience, and, and, uh, we, we, we put a pretty large debt, New York hates us, they, they know us. You know, and, and, which is awesome, and, and we're pretty happy with it, that, uh, you know, these gang members know who we are. And, uh, we've, we've, was it last year, fourteen? The, the arrests that we had with the weapon unit?
Yeah, I think last year, total of fourteen, this year, um, it's over thirty so far.
Yeah, so, I mean, so,
What's making it?
We, we, we're starting to figure it out a little bit, that there's a, this, this is gang-related, it's organized crime. They're here, and they think they're gonna push us around, because we're Washington County, and we're the underbelly of the state of Maine. And so, we have got, that's why we're trying to do the best we can, as far as, uh, dealing with these people, and, and they know who we are. And so does the New York Police Department, we're dealing with them, we exchanging information, sharing things back and forth, and it, it's all working out for us. You know, and, and, but the whole thing is, is we've gotta keep moving, we can't stop.
And, and just part of this is, we've kinda come, well, a couple of different things have happened. Um, I think for several years, and when I say several years, probably ten, fifteen years, we've been pretty good, or we thought we have been, about really not letting people know there's not as many of us as there are. Right? 'Cause we thought, well, if we, if we let people know that there aren't as many of us, then, you know, bad guys are gonna figure it out, well, they already have, really. We've just been hiding it from everybody else, and trying to dance faster to keep up the illusion. And then we've come to the realization that, uh, you know, we depend on our state partners, we depend on our federal partners. They're not fixing this for us. They're not. This is up to us to deal with and do the best we can. Nobody is coming from Augusta to save us, nobody is coming from the federal system to save us with this issue. So, you know, I believe we have some pretty smart people that live in Washington County. Given the opportunity and enough discussion, we'll start to figure some of this stuff out, try a few different things. Maybe we can come up with some type of pilot program. I mean, let's be honest, you have to be pretty resilient just to live here. You know, I think we have a lot of people, we could have all gone someplace else to live, but we didn't, we chose to stay here. So I think we can figure this out, if, if given a little bit of help and some freedom, um, to try some different things and, and, uh, you know, come up with some ideas. So this is part of what we're, what we're thinking, we're, we're looking into, you know, if we can get some grant stuff and get some equipment, we try to do that. If we can take advantage of a position through a grant, and give, to the lack of a better word, the county a couple, two or three years to brace for a position, 'cause you never wanna lose one, once you, you don't wanna have to try to lay somebody off from a full-time job in Washington County, I don't care what the job is, um, if you can help it. So we do look for those things to do. Um, but at some point, in my opinion, we need to do exactly this. Put it out and say, people, this is what it costs. But at least you know the number, people can decide for themselves if they can afford it, if they want it. If you don't, that's okay, but at least you know. You know what it is, you know what the number is, and individuals can make that decision.
I, I think it really, you came up here, 'cause I was asking Renee, why three, why three? And I think you really explained that, it isn't, it isn't about one, it's either three, or it really isn't gonna help. At least you have the three slots, so that makes total sense.
And the last couple of years, we've tried to explain that, and now we, we must have failed miserably, because we, we were chopped down right off the get-go, and so we finally caught on to what's going on with some of our competitive people. Know seems to be the only thing they have on the, in their vocabulary, I'm tied to that. You know, and so we're gonna fight them pretty to the nail now, so.
And, and one of the things I think, that I don't know if Renee had mentioned, you know, but I mean, one of the things they suggested and kicked around is, we, we get it. Um, nobody really wants their taxes to go up. But if we, if we decide this is important and we need to do this, you know, for a public safety type thing, what are we closing? Where are we gonna trade this money is, you know, I think one of the examples they used, are you gonna close the CalPDA's office? Would it all to Machias, save money there? You know, deeds open two days a week, what about probate? How, how do you want to spend what money you have? So, so there's been a lot of discussion about it, I guess, really is my point, that, um, you know, people are throwing out ideas, trying to come up with some type of solution.
And, and it's nice to have Renee on, on the, sitting on the board, 'cause she has common sense on my work. You know, and, and she does an excellent job on there, and she takes the stuff out, she's a very philosophical thinker. She is always trying to figure something else, and we, we talked at length today, um,
You can't have her. No.
Don't worry, we can take her.
Well, we can, yeah, we can afford ourselves. But, but, and, and it's kinda nice that when you, you look at that board, and it's like, it's very frustrating, and, 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 uh, when, they've been waiting for us to make our appearance, they were all giddy with excitement, you know, that we had finally made the appearance, and then it was just downhill for what, an hour and a half? It was brutal in there.
They had their decisions made up, their minds made up.
Their minds made up.
The thing is clear, you either put the money out, or you live with the house.
And the argument is, Old Bridge has one person for eight hours, nothing, all the problems are at night, and they're coming.
And, and, I, I like Lewis, nice guy and everything, I've worked with him, but,
He's someone that got you the deputy last year.
Well. And, and I mean, we, we do, and we work with all the police departments, because we don't, crime does not stay in one place. It just doesn't. Some places are busier than others because of the service hours. It's the way it is. Pick a county, I don't care what county. You know, those typically tend to be busy. But it never stays, it always circles up and down. And, and so we, we all know we have to work together, we do work together. But like the sheriff says, I, I think sometimes at the end of the day, uh, it's his phone that rings, um, when things aren't being done, or things are out of control, because he's the sheriff, he's been elected by the people, everybody knows it. You know, half the time, when I was a police officer, one of the deputies down here in Lubeck, um, I was here for seven years. I won't say half the time, but a third of the time, they never called dispatch, they showed up on my app, or they called me on the phone. Right? 'Cause I lived here, right? And they go, okay, we're just gonna go see Mike. Many moons ago, the first family argument I ever handled happened to be in my living room, 'cause they came to me. We'll work it out, I guess. We're gonna go see Mike, straighten this out. And so you get that as a local, as a, as a local deputy. And one of our guys in Skidoo, Ben, Jim, everybody knows Jim. Jim doesn't only patrol Skidoo, he has, you know, a bunch of other towns to do, so, um, so that's what we're trying to do, that's why we have the number three. I, I would, and I, we've talked about it, and I think it's fair to say, you know, if we, if, if this does, does come to fruition, barring any major thing happening, you know, PD's folding, or something crazy with the state police, you know, it'll be a while before we come back and say, hey, we need to help more people. Um, this is probably gonna get us through a few, you know, depending, so, um, and we've discussed the one a year, one a year. It's helpful, I mean, I would never say it isn't, but you don't seem to get on front of them. And, and that's why we, you know, explaining how we came up with this, um, that's why.
You guys have a lot of turnover.
We, sometimes, and you know what, you know what causes the problem there? Is that, uh, we, we discussed the money part of it, and we had to do something. State police, you know, were able to just throw money at it. Well then, so we talked about it, and we, we kinda had to get our, our pay up, so that we could keep people, because the first thing, we hire somebody, train them, and they're gone. You know, and, and so, all right, then we start over, train them, and get them on the road, and they're gone.
That's expensive.
Well, it is, very expensive, and it's hard on all of us, because one minute you have somebody, the next minute you don't, you're planning on things, you can't, now you gotta stop, because somebody's left for more money. So we, our money had, we put that up, and our benefits are, are pretty decent. And, and you kinda have to offer that to get people here to stay. And, and it does, it's a, it's a major problem. But then we've got people that can offer money. Portland, they can order, uh, do a bonus program, where you get like ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollars to sign. Or, us little Red Sox people up here, we, we haven't got that money, so we, we have to take what we can get and try to convince them to stay.
Well, and like the University of Machias, they're starting a, um, they're, they're working on getting a law enforcement program going, so that maybe people wouldn't have to leave to go to Houston, or be, um, something like that, so maybe there's something here. Maybe we can, maybe we can entice.
In China.
Right. We, 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 we've got a, uh, whatever.
Whatever the phone.
I don't have a calendar, probably, I, I'm totally lost. But we're gonna be meeting with the president, the new president that's, uh, I guess I call him,
Of the university.
Of the university. And not the president, that would be awesome.
You've got a calendar.
I'd get a kick out of it, but, 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 we're meeting with him, and one of the things that, we were talking to him, and we said, gee, you know, you got this program up there, you know, why, what's your thing about turning that into law enforcement? And so he's sitting there, and we're talking, and he's like, that's not a bad idea, so, you know, go again, you know, Ampe's got a good class up there, but, you know, uh, just kinda go against Beale's, go against, uh, Hassan, for a lower amount of money. We would probably be able to attract more, uh, Washington County guys or ladies to, um, you know, to go into these programs. And it'd be a big help. We'll have, we've got another meeting with him coming up, and he's seriously thinking about it. So then, you know, it's things that we're thinking about, our little brains,
Maybe someone would come here to school and say, as opposed to going to Bangor.
Tell them you're ready for that, and then they stay.
Well, then they go, and they go Bangor PD's right there, they walk over, oh, yeah, yeah, little, little hi, you know, yeah, okay, thanks.
So we're thinking about it, we're trying to do what we can do.
That's a good idea, yeah, that's very good.
Well, not to drag this out much further, but I would like to say, you preach into the choir, it sounds like at this point, these guys,
I'm in for two loaves of bread, two.
It's up to the people to contact the budget committee members individually, or to show up at the October thirtieth meeting at six-thirty at the Superior Courtroom, and to let them know how you feel, because you gotta change Congress at this point. And that is, that's, and that's another thing.
I'm gonna go.
Joanne and Renee are,
Renee's not gonna go.
We'll go, and Suzanne will take the minutes, that might,
Because I think it's gonna be important that, that somebody shows up from down here, because that, we, we, we have to have some positive voices. We got enough negative millies there now, and, and we just need to, uh, spin this in a positive direction. They're so negative about things, on how they do it, and it's incredible.
Well, they're negative because they have their own PD, and they don't care about anybody else.
Exactly. And, well, we've got them to say that. Exactly, and well, we've got them to say that.
Right, I will.
We, because we, we, we.
But you know what, they're going to catten on you, Joe.
They're going to say, you let your own P D go, that's what they have said.
When we were talking to them, we actually, we talked about this before, we got over to that meeting, and, and we're like, let's try to get them to admit that they're just doing their own kind of.
We've got to see them see the whole picture, and that's why I've asked you guys to bring hard numbers. How has crime increased? How many towns do you respond to in a day, or whatever, for the last five years even? How is, why do you need this? Why do you need this? And where do you see yourself? Show that in numbers. They're number people, they look at those numbers, and they're crunched better than anybody else.
You've got just enough though, that's putting a halt to everything that we're trying to accomplish.
But you know, if it's drug trafficking, and they're moving around the community.
You guys need to, um, count the number of times that you have assisted those P Ds.
That's what I'm just saying.
That's right.
We have, and some are more than others, obviously, some are not.
And also, not just the other P Ds, but how about our E M S?
Right, right, it's, right, our fire.
But see, that's, that's the issue with Washington County, and why we're a little different animal down there. We've never had the luxury to really get in these, um, disputes about, this is my turf, this is my territory. There's not enough of us. Um, you have, you, you know, an ambulance shows up, a fire truck shows up, nobody cares where you're from. You know, a gun and a bat shows up, I don't care where you're from, thank you, um, or who you work for. And we've always done that, and we've always gotten along very well. Um, and we've always pitched in and helped out the other person, because there's just not enough.
To go around.
To go around the area. And, and I don't, and, uh, even when I worked on the road, uh, I, I didn't care what uniform you wore or anything. Some of the, some of the troopers kind of decided, you know, years ago, that they were, talk lunch, and they didn't care for other departments and stuff. I never got into that, I just didn't see the sense in it. I loved everybody, so if they could help me, I'd care, and it's the same thing with today, you know, we work with everybody. The Border Patrol, it doesn't matter who it is, we can help you if they call, we're going. And we're going to help, you know, and we're going to fight side to side. And, uh, I, I just, we're not going to change that, but, you know, it's just, we get so frustrated with some of the people that they send to represent them, that it's just like, wow, incredible.
I'm going to add one more thing that we haven't talked about, and I think it's important, is the others, another side of this, face of this monster, is the D A, and that a lot of the discussion, the day that we were talking your budget, a lot of fingers were pointing to the district attorney, and, and their ability to do their job appropriately and effectively. And today, we listened to his budget and his arguments, and he, right out of his mouth, said, it will help them to have more deputies, because when they are prosecuting a case, and the other, the defendant's attorney gives them a whole list of things that needs to be fulfilled. It could be twenty things, twenty-five things, and a lot of that involves an officer to go back out, to continue investigating, to get. And if that information isn't gathered, then the case is dismissed by the judge. And so, that's how this, this is the way, right, we share the A with Hancock County.
There's all kinds of those little intricacies, you know, things from behind the scenes, so, you know, typically, once somebody calls the police, you respond, you do what needs to be done, if you arrest somebody or whatever, very rarely is that really the case. Um, typically is not. Uh, you know, the investigation, and follow-up, and things that, that need to be done to bring that. You know, our job is to present the best case we can present to the D A, so that they have the best chance of doing what, you know, they can do with that case. And sometimes that involves, okay, I like it, however, comma, could you go check on this boy? It'd be really nice if we could find that person that stopped on the side of the road, that was from, we don't know where. Um, so there's all these things that, that, that might come into that, so. Another thing too, is that this sharing, the, the, the Washington Hancock slash, uh, sharing, we are Washington County. There's nowhere on any of these signs that you commit to our county that is slash Hancock. And, and we don't get our fair share of the money, uh, it starts before it gets to us, whatever's left over crumbs, that's what we're being sent. And, and we're not accomplishing anything being Washington Hancock. And so, that's one of the things that I complain about all the time, and we mentioned it the other day, back in the seventies, we had our own D A, D A here. We, we had a Washington County D A, and we didn't share it with Hancock. He has plenty to do, there's, there's enough work here to have two of them. And we probably should be really thinking about going back, and it has to go through legislation, and get this changed. And, and have our own D A that stays here, stays in the office, he doesn't travel back and forth between Alzwerch and here, and, and that we have his attention, we have his time, and we have all of the, uh, you know, whatever he needs, he's going to be right in the office for us.
And then he could speak for Washington County as well.
Exactly, you know, and, and. And this, and it, people kind of really get on, the D A's pretty hard around here, and yeah, it's, it's hard to split between two places. And we talked, and I told him that I, I'm kind of pushing for it, and he goes, I understand. You know, he says, I've got plenty to do in both places, so, I mean, if it happened, it's not going to break his heart, you know, but, uh, I, I think it's something that we really need to have, put in front of legislation, and have it put back where it used to be. Going back to that one. This one, we're supposed to move forward. But I think it would be, I think it would be a forward movement, you know, for us to have our own.
That's something that really should be thought of, I believe, I've heard a lot of feedback, that people say, well, we just don't have our own D A.
It'd be so much easier to, and I, and I will, I, I will push that too, I, I have anyway, I've mentioned it, and I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that, uh, January here will start pushing for it too, so, but you may hear some rumble about it. Yeah, I mean, the reality is, we have thirty-two thousand people, Hancock has seventy-four.
Washington County, though, is, that pendulum's swinging, I think.
We can vote twice, and we cannot vote that.
In Washington County, I think the population is increasing, not very fast, but it is.
But, and my, my point being with that is, we can vote twice, and we still don't have it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, a- as far as votes, we're talking two different counties, it, it's pretty difficult.
proximity, and, and amount of square footage, and, and percentage of crime, all of those things. We're talking way to vote.
And that's what's happening on this budget.
Right, right. It's like the old section, Jerry.
It's way to go. Thank you very much, and, uh, I'm coming, and I appreciate all the, have any further questions? And, uh, I, I don't know about the rest of the selectmen, but we want to hold the meeting down there, and I'll be for it. Well, I, I also like, want to go down there and say positive things, maybe we could have our meeting at five.
Have our meeting earlier, so we can all.
That's something you guys can do right now.
And I just, I just hope that a lot of this is just creating discussions within the town, so that at least they're having these discussions. And, and if people show up, to be honest, and I probably shouldn't say this, but if people show up to this meeting and go, absolutely not, I don't want it, I don't think we need to. That's fine, that's fine, you have the information, you can make your decision.
What is terrible is when people who say absolutely not, no way, but the minute there's problems, they want to know where the police are.
Well, I, I said this in the meeting the other day, there's two things in Washington County, people, they change in the way it is. So, so it's, it's sometimes hard to get, you know, we're not going to change this, but I don't want to cover it.
That's right.
Well, what do you want us to do? Um, we've got to do something. So, and you're right, it's, it's kind of like, you know, if, if people don't come out and vote for you folks sitting on the board, don't complain about who's sitting on the board. Um, you know, we may vote, our person may not win, but hey, at least we did it. Um, so hopefully it does get some discussion, and, and I appreciate Renee's attitude, and I know there's several other on the budget committee that have the same of, oh, wait a minute, yeah, I, I mean, my town sent me. But I, I think I should think about these other places as well, um, and how they might feel about this. Um, and, you know, at least, you know, reach out and see what they think, and, and give them some factual information, and they can toss it around, and see what they'd like to do. So hopefully a bunch of people show up and.
And your vote is the thirty-first, correct, to vote, they have to vote. The meeting's thirty, they're going on with the next.
Are, are they going to actually go? There's a lot to do, but it's pretty vicious with the. So say, if they're going to try to do it, they're going to have a whole day. Because when they start picking me a fact, line by line, we're going to have to have the whole day. Just a lot of stuff we've got to put on hold, I think, a couple of different things.
I thought they meant to have a vote, and then stay with something else.
Yeah, I think, I, hopefully, I mean, hopefully they can all get through it, but.
That's how.
It just may be a day.
Yeah. Do you have apples? If you get a uniform, they can.
Anything else we can answer her, anybody, while we're right here?
No, you're good.
I think you're good.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Try to move on meetings, so you're welcome.
Yeah, that'd be great, you know, and then I think, the more the merrier, and, and, uh, you know, it kind of gives everybody a chance to listen to what, you know, what some of these other people are saying, you know. But, thank you.
Thanks for doing what you do.
All right, see you now.
E-Waste is ending October seventeenth, that's today, so.
Oh, no.
Good night. All right.
Bye, guys. Yes, we've got to sign a survey.
I didn't know if reading that impression.
Need a motion to sign. Surveying for account number five zero two two zero zero four sixty-eight sixty-four.
Oh, fifty-five Water Street, it's on the back of A one.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept the survey?
Yes.
Second. I'll show on favor.
Dana Bradley, head of the high school ad hoc committee, submitted a final report. He would like the report to be accepted by the selectmen, and.
Dissolved.
And to dissolve the, uh, committee, that they've done their work, they've submitted their report, and they would like the committee dissolved.
I would most that we would dissolve the committee.
And accept the report.
Yes, and accept the report.
One second. All in favor?
I would like to thank these people, they, they've really done a really good job.
Yes, they did.
Um, going through all this, and writing it down, and, I mean, it took a long time, and, uh, wanted to say thank you, dear. Yeah, Dana did, and Rachel.
It's very, it's very well written.
It is, it's really, I'm Dana. It's really good.
I thought it was very well done.
It's sad, but it's really good.
So, arrow, there's just two.
Really did you home.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you all for.
Yes, putting in a tire.
There's nothing unlike better than to see a high school.
So, um, make a motion, uh, appoint, uh, Harold Tinker and Randy Hall to assistant fire chief. Make down a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Renee, you give that some deep balance available?
We certainly do, they're live and well, and we're running a sale on them, they're a very hot item right now.
One with customers, I would have to say.
At a happier note, do you have auditors coming here?
That's right, next week, on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, uh, is our annual audit, so we will be slightly busy at the office.
Does that mean you're, you're still open, but have patients when you come to the counter?
That's right.
And dog licenses available as well, and what is the, when do they have to be bought by?
You get a late fee February first, if dogs aren't registered by February first. And Rhonda is working to get a rabies clinic here, by our station, and that'll be announced. And this is the week that you can get your cats faved or neutered at the Calis Clinic, so, that's on our website.
On the channel.
Yeah, on, on our.
Have a comment? Yeah, I'm sorry. Do we have an opportunity? We just came up to one, Matthew, uh, we've just come up, and I don't know if the board realized that, but we had set a date with, um, you know, we, uh, forming a committee to draw from the A O F. Did you guys know that?
I believe it.
Today.
But do you need a committee forum?
For one thing, we didn't, we have to form, and we have, quite honestly, just half of the petition signed, because I've been so busy. But we will be coming, and Renee suggested November fourteen.
So that we could go. And then at that time, you want the committee forum, because I think this select board has to.
And we'll have a little presentation too, Carol.
But I think you'd like to see the petition group.
I think you're going to bring up a list of names that want to be on the committee, right?
They're not a presentation.
Yeah, and, and do a little presentation about the.
We're doing it very, um, we're trying to get well planned as possible, methodical, factual, unbiased, just getting our ducks in the road, make sure this is done right. And more than half of the petition's already signed.
And I will say one thing, the state now, they used to pay, you used to have to pay a penalty if you went through, and now, the state, I talked to them, and that's been.
Just, uh, check with Renee, uh, after November sixth, because the rule was ten percent of the last gubernatorial election, which is November sixth. So it may change, the figure, that you have to submit after November sixth. It depends on how many people show up for that watching.
Okay.
Uh, Harvard Board, third Monday of the month at six, I don't know what that is, third Monday, um, November, Joanne?
Nineteenth.
Down East E M S Christmas meeting will be December tenth at five at the Friendly Restaurant.
Whoa.
Goodie.
Rachel?
Recycle will be meeting November the ninth at four o'clock here in this place right here. And the last meeting, we have decided to put some little clips on the Quoddy ties, reminding people of how they can recycle, alternative ideas to recycling, that kind of thing, just to get people's consciousness up and running, because the recycling programs all over the country are under siege right now.
What about economic development?
Oh, we are, I tried to talk to Specter, and Denise and I have been in contact with Stephanie, and I don't think it's going to, we're going to meet after another week, I think both Denise and I have been very busy, so before Thanksgiving.
Did we change to six, because I missed it.
I have it down to the thirteenth. For the selectmen's meeting, right? Uh, thirteen.
St. Barbara's going to be on the twenty-ninth at five before the school board meeting. Is school board now every other Thursday?
That's the fifteenth, it should be fifteen.
What?
The school board.
I, oh, I'm sorry, is the school board, oh, they didn't vote for it?
Yeah, we are, it's every two weeks now.
Oh, that's every two weeks. Is it every, that's my question, is it the second and the fourth, or is it every other Thursday?
I think every other Thursday here, like tomorrow night, they'll have one. Yeah, every other.
Yeah, so we don't have the Thursday. Okay, so anyway, the twenty-ninth on, at five, second.
I think you need to vote to change the time of that meeting, don't you?
Of what?
Of the thirtieth, that's your next meeting.
Didn't you do that last time? Well, because now we. Change the date.
Oh, 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 I see, to, to like earlier in the day. Does that work with everybody?
Can we all meet at four? I can be at four, can you meet at four?
My boss likes that.
You, buddy?
If I'm not there, I'll be here.
Yes, so, and then some, maybe a few people, at least a couple people can go down to that meeting together.
Yeah, I'd like to see it all go.
Yes, I would too.
Okay, is it six? Make the motion and change it to four o'clock, the select board meeting on, uh, October thirtieth.
Carol, meet it. Second. Joanne. All in favor? Four o'clock on the thirtieth.
So that'll need to go on the Quoddy.
Six.
That we will not have a meeting.
Quoddy TV.
I'm sorry, Quoddy TV, sorry.
Joanne, I got, I got Joanne.
You do?
I told him to call Carol.
Oh, so why don't you? She got round the corner to refer me.
You never set me up.
You do.